Somebody broke my chair.
You're a lone rider over there. Alright. Alright, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Hello. Thank you, Austin. Yeah, we'll call the meeting to order. Uh, I'll be sitting here. Let's see, maybe we have roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Loa.
Here.
Council members, Commissioners Carrillo.
Here.
Bettencourt.
Here.
Bishop. Rodriguezain.
Here.
And Denny.
Here.
We have form.
Thank you very much. Should I move to excuse the mayor? Yes, please.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Loa. I have a statement for Mayor Hoffbauer regarding his absence this evening. Quote, "As some may have noticed, I have been dealing with managing some medical challenges the last few months. These have culminated in my admission to the ICU at a local hospital with a somewhat rare condition that the consensus of the medical staff determined I would require transfer to a medical teaching and research facility better equipped to treat me down below," end quote.
Alright, so I move to excuse the mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Please send, um, please send a more concern. And I'll communicate with him as well. But, um, our prayers and thoughts are with him and his family. Public comments on closed session items. The public is invited to commit, comment on any closed session item listed below. Please submit a speaker's form to City Clerk before this portion of the meeting begins. Each person addressing the council authorities customarily given up to three minutes to speak, with double time allotted to non-English speakers using a translator. The amount of time authorized may be adjusted by the chair. If you wish to provide information to the council slash authority, please present the city clerk with seven copies. Otherwise, your materials will simply be added to the administrative record. If you're attending the meeting by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. If attending by personal computer, please click the raise your hand button. Press star six to unmute yourself, state your name, and begin speaking. Do we have any callers, any speakers online? Okay, and none, none on the phone? Is there anyone in the chamber that wishes to address the council at this time?
We have Laurel Forrest.
Okay. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor Hoffbauer in absentia, City Council members and Palmdale city staff. My name is Laurel Forrest. I'm a decade-long member of the Palmdale community, a property owner, taxpayer, and committed voter in the city of Palmdale. I'm here to address you on some very serious concerns which have come to my attention lately regarding the conduct of the city council and some of the employees of the city in regard to the city council's rushed termina- termination and alleged despicable conduct displayed toward a very highly qualified and esteemed former city manager J.J. Murphy. In every possible problem arising in a governmental employee conduct and personnel matter, there were multiple concerns which all must be incorporated, honored, and addressed. Among these are the principles of essential fairness, impartiality, professional evaluation of facts, and taking into consideration all of the individual's history and background, including the accusers and the accused. It also includes the right to have due process and to have a system and procedures in place which observes all aspects of due process. However, in this case, by the publicly reported alleged actions of Mayor Hoffbauer and some employees, not only was our highly respected, professionally experienced, and productive city manager J. B., J. Murphy reportedly not accorded his rightful due process against the allegedly false allegations, but the city council escalated and exacerbated the damage to him when they actively sought to personally and professionally harm this individual. The good news for all of us is that, as it came to my attention last week, the Superior Court of the County of Los Angeles, in its great wisdom, has issued an order which dismissed the ill-advised civil lawsuit that had begun all the scandalous troubles that was filed by a former assistant city manager named Marie. I have read the order in detail in which the court enumerated and dismissed each and every one of her accusations in totality, period. This is what attorneys call a rare outcome. In reading the Superior Court's public document, it is replete with words describing the specious claims like, quote, "unfounded," quote, "unprovable," quote, "hearsay," and, quote, "unsupported allegations" by the former city employee named Marie, who, the court says, was alleged to have also wrongly forgiven a forty thousand dollar fee. Has a city attorney been successful in recovering our money? That is not a rhetorical question. The fact that the city dismissed those allegations in her lawsuit, one by one, with specifically supportive case law, is a substantial vindication of Mr. Murphy, and Mr. Murphy has now been totally cleared of all those false allegations. In this case, to my understanding, Mr. Murphy was not accorded any such impartial outside investigation. Instead, after a very short period of weeks, he was brought before the council falsely accused and summarily dismissed in the most public and embarrassing way possible. The residents of this community have been lucky during the tenure of Mr. Murphy, working for the city first as a very productive and respected assistant city manager, and then when you yourself appointed Mr. Murphy to be the city manager, a title and responsibility which he had meritoriously earned through many years of increasingly responsible and lauded public service. I have watched for a long time residents and community groups come up here and praise Mr. Murphy and recognize him for his leadership.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Your time has expired. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, before we go, are there any other, um, persons wishing to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. Before I go to item four, four, presentation on city attorney, I need to read this. "After the agenda was posted, the city learned of some facts and circumstances that, in the city attorney's opinion, constitute significant exposure of litigation against the city. City attorney has advised that it is appropriate to add one agenda item of, quote, 'conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation,' close quote. Because of the urgent need to discuss immediately, we need to add the discussion, let's see. However, the council may only, uh, add the matter uh, for discussion by the city council if it finds by a minimum of four votes that these facts were learned, one, after the agenda was posted, and two, that there is a need to take immediate action. Is there a motion to add this item to the closed session?"
This is the first I'm hearing about any of this.
I know, we just found out about it.
It's, it's kinda hard to make a decision when we know absolutely nothing about it.
So, um, my recommendation would be that you would vote to approve, and then we can discuss in closed session, and if you find that, uh, we can explain what the facts and circumstances are, and if you wanna make a determination at that point that it is no longer appropriate, you can stop the discussion. So my recommendation would be that you would vote to approve.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a vote in the second. Uh, call for the roll, please.
Mayor Protem Loa.
Yes.
Council members Carrillo.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
And Bettencourt.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion passes. Uh, presentation by the city attorney.
So, uh, we'll now be, uh, did you wanna, yeah, so...
Um, is there anyone here that is, um, and, that has an interest in the AV, uh, measure grants program? Okay, go ahead and make a, make an announcement now.
Good evening again, uh, Mayor Protem Loa and council members. As a result of the lack of all members attending the council meeting this evening, and based on the statement I read from Mayor Hoffbauer, we will be unable to take action due to conflicts that, uh, some of you have related to Measure AB this evening, and the matter will be ported over to the next meeting in Aug-, I'm sorry, the second meeting in August.
And that's August seventeenth?
August seventeenth.
Alright, so, you know, you won't, unless you want to remain, of course, you're welcome. Uh, but the matter will not be taken up tonight.
Is there, is there an option for an, what is that terminology, an urgency, emergency?
City attorney, you have a response?
So, there, there is an exception, so, as you're aware of the rule, there are rules of relating to conflicts of interest, um, and they prohibit, um, participation in, in this instance, unless they're accused. There is an exception if there's a legal necessity. Um, but the rules expressly say that having a lack of a quorum does not constitute an emergency, so therefore that by itself, you'll, you, again, you only have two council members who would be able to, to vote. So, that does not constitute, um, so we, we just need to wait until you can have the mayor participate, so at least we can have three voting on the item, and then we can proceed.
So the key is the, there's no legal emergency? That's why we couldn't do that, or?
Correct.
In the event, and I, I don't wish to speak, uh, in any sense, uh, wanting any ill, ill will towards the mayor. I hope he recovers, and I hope he's, he's fine, uh, after the doctors and so on intervene on his behalf. Uh, but should something not be, uh, po- in other words, he's not able to come back, would that then constitute an emergency?
Right. If, if at some point it becomes clear that he will be unable to participate, then certainly there will be, then, then we can, then there are means to, uh, avoid the conflict of interest.
Is there another option where we really have to act on this? It's been six months.
So...
If, if, if the mayor comes back, you know, next month, but one of us is out, then we won't be able to do anything. So my point is, because of the perceived, um, conflicts of interest with two or three council members here, can each grant application be separated?
So what we could do is you could call a special meeting, and you just make sure that Mayor Hoffbauer, uh, council members Bettencourt and Carrillo are able to attend, then at least you have, the three of you would vote on that, at least one item, and then you could agendize...
That's not what I meant. What I meant is this. Mr. Loa has a conflict of interest with two grant applications.
There's one, one specific one and one potential one.
One or two. So what if, uh, the twenty-some applications that are gonna be in front of us, what if those two, uh, grant applications that there's a conflict with Mayor Protem can be taken out? Then, the four of us, or three of us, with a quorum, we can act on the remainder. Same thing with Mr. Bishop, if there's a conflict with three or four.
No, I, I, I understand the terms.
This is just ridiculous now. It's, it's, the, the money needs to get out to the, to the, the groups that need it to help the, the community.
I wholeheartedly concur. So, uh, the solution is for at least three to participate as quickly as possible.
So you're saying that there is no way that the grant applications can be...
Not under the current, not under the current facts. Um, if the facts change, then certainly. So I wanna be aware, I, I just wanna make sure we stay on the agenda. Um, so right now, the closed session item, unless there's any further discussion of this, certainly you can call a, a meeting or direct staff to call a special meeting, that's certainly within your purview.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so we're going to, uh, closed session now. We will be back at seven o'clock.
It won't last long. It'll warm right up, you watch.
We're going to resume. I want to thank everyone for their patience, waiting. We've run a little bit late at seven forty. But we've been in closed session and maybe we haven't announced by the city attorney.
So there is no reportable action that was taken during closed session?
We're good. With that, we'll adjourn the closed session meeting and we will adjourn the housing authority meeting. So at this point, I'd like to call on Mr. Phil Denny of our Housing Authority, an Vietnam veteran, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And thereafter, a brief moment of silence for our troops. Mr. Denny.
Okay, begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Denny. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Loa.
Here.
Councilmember Scario.
Here.
Bishop.
Here.
And Bettencourt.
Here.
May I call on Ms. Press to make a statement about the mayor, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. A statement from Mayor Hoffbauer regarding his absence this evening. Quote, "As some may have noticed, I have been dealing with managing some medical challenges the last few months. These have culminated in my admission to the ICU at a local hospital with a somewhat rare condition that the consensus of the medical staff determined I would require transfer to a medical teaching and research facility better equipped to treat me down below." End quote.
Is there a motion to excuse the mayor?
I'll make a motion to excuse the mayor.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Loa.
Yes.
Councilmember Scario.
Yes.
Bishop. And Bettencourt.
Thank you. Our best wishes to him. Full recovery soon. A waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances. Is there a motion?
Motion. Do you so?
Is it second? Okay. Call for the questions.
Mayor Protem Loa.
Yes.
Councilmembers Scario.
Yes.
Bishop. And Bettencourt.
Yes.
Public comments on listed agenda items excluding public hearings. You may address the council once per meeting during the public comments. This portion of the public comment is on any item listed on the agenda excluding public hearings, if any. And I believe we have some. Public comment on public hearing items, if any, will be heard when that matter is considered. To address the council regarding an item on the agenda, please fill out a speaker's form and submit it to the city clerk before the mayor announces the item. Each person addressing the council is customarily given up to three minutes to speak with double time allotted to non-English speakers using a translator. The amount of time authorized may be adjusted by the chair. If you wish to provide information to the council, please present the city clerk with seven copies. Otherwise, your materials will simply be added to the administrative record. If you're attending the meeting by phone, please press nine to raise your hand. If attending by personal computer, please click the raise your hand button. Press star six to unmute yourself, state your name, and begin speaking. Do we have any persons wishing to speak online?
Yes, we do.
Jason Zink.
Mayor Protem, may I make an announcement regarding item fifteen point two?
Oh, yes. Yes, we need to address that first. We'll get back to that in a moment. Yes, please do.
Mayor Protem, council members, and members of the public. The item fifteen point two awarding Measure V grant dollars will be pushed to the August seventeenth meeting due to a lack of quorum this evening considering the conflicts that the council members that are present on the dais here today may have.
Yes. Okay, so if you're here for that matter, it will not be heard until August seventeenth. And we ask your indulgence and appreciate your patience. Okay, do we have persons wishing to speak online or on the phone?
Yes, Jason Zink.
Mr. Zink, please. You have three minutes.
You can go ahead and mute yourself.
I'll just wait for the non-agendimized items.
Okay. About now, right?
Correct. The non-unagenda items, they're listed at the end of the agenda, so we can... If there are any other people online?
Ah, yes. Richard Norris, you can go ahead. Can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Three minutes, sir. Your time is running. Can you hear us? All right, apparently we've been disconnected. Is there another speaker?
Hello?
Yes, sir. Your time is running. If you could, please start. Mr. Lopez, do we have another speaker?
Eric Olson, you're allowed to speak.
Go ahead. Is there a glitch on our side or on their side, or what's going on?
I'm not sure, because we were able to hear Jason earlier. I'm trying to see what could be going on. Eric Olson, try one more time.
Mr. Olson, can you hear us? We are not hearing you if you're speaking, sir. All right, so...
Eric Olson, I'll come back to you. Let me go on to the next person. Kevin Shankman, feel free to unmute yourself.
Mr. Shankman, can you hear us? Okay, apparently we're having some kind of a communication issue there. Why don't we go to any speakers in the council chamber while that's cleared up back there?
We have one, sir. Rosie Manella. It just says public comments. So I'm not sure if it's on consent calendar, but it just says public comments.
What's the topic that this person wishes to speak on? Right? Please come forward.
Make sure that I spoke today on behalf of all our commissioners in regards to reappointing them or keeping their current positions that they have and that they hold. I've known quite a few of them, of the commissioners, before they became commissioners. And they're good people. They're hardworking, they're people-oriented, they care about our community. And in specific, I would like to say that Chris, she was always there for me, taking my girls when they were in Water Polo, and her daughter was also in Water Polo. And I was working in L.A., she was always there, you know, just... And that's where I met her, just at Water Polo at school. So we weren't friends before that, but that's the kind of person that she is. She's the kind of person that helps others when she sees a need. So I wanted to make sure that you guys knew that you have a good person in your hands. V. Jesse Smith, the same thing. Great human being. And, gosh, I'm like having brain fade. But Station Amos is also an amazing person, right? We were in Girl Scouts together. She ran the whole council. And she's amazing. And she always did for all the girls. She never just did for her troop. She did for everyone. So when you have somebody who's good and committed to our city and committed to making sure that things are done right, you should hold on to them. Volunteers are hard to come by. And right now, even when you pay people, they're hard to come by. After COVID, we lost a lot of people. And we also lost them to languish and depression. Even kids are not wanting to go out and play and do things. So we need to change the dynamic, and we need to appreciate those that are serving our community already. And I just wanted to come and support them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I just want to state that, given the change in the way that the city is electing its council members, it does impact the appointment of the planning commissioners. So we'll see how that works, because we have to comply with that ordinance. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak in the chamber?
Ruth Sanchez.
Ruth Sanchez, please come forward, ma'am.
Good evening. First, I want to talk about the commissioners. I do have an issue when we have a commissioner multiple that has holds multiple seats in different commissions. It is a problem for me, because there's a lot of people in the community that can be doing that service, and I think that the mayor should not be allowed to appoint up his friends to multiple commissions. I think that that should be given to the community. Also, I just want to go ahead and give you guys some data, since you guys keep postponing the Measure AV. Just so you guys know, right now, we have had so far seventeen deaths, twenty-nine fatalities. They're all homeless individuals. So their death is on your hands, and all you guys keep doing is postponing it. I understand the mayor, once again, is out sick. But at what point are you guys really going to do the job and get to this item? We can't keep doing this. People are dying out on the street, you know? And all we keep saying is, oh, we'll just postpone it to another month, we'll just postpone it to another meeting. That is not right, and it's not fair. It is time for the ones that are here doing their jobs to do it. How many times have we not seen the mayor chiseled and wants to go ahead and sue meetings when Councilmember Bettencourt couldn't be here? But it's okay to keep postponing when he's not here. And to me, it just seems like you guys are just postponing it and postponing and just buying time. And it's time to get your job done. So make the decision and quit wasting our time. You know, I keep coming over here to hear what you guys are finally going to do, and I don't know if you guys are afraid to do the right thing, or you guys don't know what to do. But we can't keep doing that. So keep those numbers in mind. So far, you have over forty people that have died just this year, and we're barely in July. How many more needs to die before you guys do the right thing? Thank you.
Perhaps the city attorney could explain the reason that we can't move forward tonight on that.
So as the public may be aware, we've got two different council members that have conflicts of interest, and there is a legal requirement that says that if you have a conflict of interest, that those people need to recuse before any consideration of the items where they have a particular conflict. So if you have those two that recuse, that means you only have two people here to make a decision, and you need to have three. That's the sole reason that this is being postponed. The moment that we've got the mayor plus the two that don't have a conflict here, then you'll have three votes, and then we can start the ball rolling.
You know, our desire is that the mayor recovers and, you know, that he's going to be able to participate further. But if in case he's not able to do that, then what might happen?
So if we get to the point where it's legally required, I realize there's a desire in the public, and frankly, there's a desire of the city council to take action, but a desire is not a legal, it doesn't meet the legal standard. But once it does meet the legal standard, then we can essentially draw straws among people that would be participating, but that's unlikely to occur anytime soon.
Okay, but there's a way forward in case that becomes an issue with him not coming back.
Mayor Protem, I'm sorry to interrupt. We do not have a Zoom feed that is live right now, so we need to take a break.
Okay, so we'll take a break.
I mean, I'm being advised, we just found out about the fact that the feed was not working, so the meeting has to include the feed. So I know we have some speakers online, so the first one.
The first one is Kevin Shankman.
Okay, Mr. Shankman, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I should probably make sure that you can hear me.
Yes, you can be heard, being heard.
Excellent, thank you. I feel like this needs to be done far too often with the city of Palmdale, but it again seems that you're getting bad advice. With respect to the fifteen point two being pulled off the agenda and the conflicts, that is just simply incorrect. Page one oh two of the League of California Cities Guide on Conflict of Interest states, quote, "Regulation eighteen seven oh six," which is California Code of Regulations Title II, Section eighteen seven oh six, "allows for a decision that presents conflicts of interest in some form to one or more members to be bifurcated, trifurcated, or otherwise to allow disqualified members to vote on the portions of the decision that are not causing the conflict of interest." So in connection with the Measure AV funds, there are dozens of entities that funds are going to. If, in fact, and it's dubious, but if one or more of the council members has a conflict with respect to one or more of those dozens of entities, that council member can recuse as to just that entity. I believe Councilmember Carrillo made this point. He is correct. And in fact, thereafter, the next page of the guide says, "Once all separate decisions related to a budget or general plan affecting the entire jurisdiction have been finalized, the public official may participate in a final vote to adopt or reject the local agency's budget or to adopt, reject, or amend the general plan." So you do have a quorum here today for that item, and it should go forward. Next, putting something on closed session agenda as a, quote, "emergency" still requires some description of what that item says. I believe Eric Olson alluded to that, but I don't think you guys could hear it. And the cases dealing with this are Fowler versus City of Lafayette, two thousand twenty, forty-six, Cal App fifth, three sixty, and Moreno versus City of King, two thousand five, one twenty-seven, Cal App fourth, seventeen. It is not a sufficient description to go into closed session simply saying one item or one item of anticipated litigation. There needs to be a description, it can be just one sentence, but there needs to be a description sufficient to allow the public to make comments on that item. I don't know why it's being done otherwise. The next thing is, it appears, you know, I was at the last council meeting, and the city attorney was attempting to draft an urgency ordinance on the spot. It was never in writing, it was never agendized. You can't do that. It simply violates the Brown Act, and every time you guys do this, you're opening yourselves up to liability. I don't want to sue the city, but, you know, it's like, what else do you do to get this city to come?
Jason? Sorry, Eric Olson?
Mr. Olson, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're heard. Go ahead, sir.
Well, I find myself in agreement with the previous caller. When you guys added that emergency item to the closed session agenda, you asked to clarify what that emergency was, and the advice was basically, just trust me. If you guys want to listen to it and decide it's not an emergency, we'll stop talking. That's just embarrassing advice. The public has the right to know. How do we know if we can comment on it or should comment on it? And with Measure AV, again, it seems like the city attorney deemed that there'd be no quorum and that the council didn't actually take a vote to table this item. If the council didn't vote to table the item, I think it should still be discussed, and you can take a vote on this tonight. I think the items that need to be recused on, take that out, do it separately. But this is embarrassing to keep putting this grant process back, and it all seems to be political favors for the mayor, and you made a mistake with this attorney. Correct your mistake, it's embarrassing. Please move on to something better.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Mr. Lopez? Was Mr. Zink on? He was on the line previously. Is he still on?
He is, but we have other callers. He is on the line, but I do believe he stated that he wishes to speak.
Oh, that's great, that's great. Are there any other speakers online or on the phone?
Yes, caller with the number ending in four zero zero, feel free to unmute yourself.
They don't seem to be unmuting themselves, so we're gonna move on to the next person. Richard Norris, feel free to unmute yourself.
Mr. Norris? Can you hear us? Mr. Norris? Are we still, um, on the feed here, on this meeting?
Yes, we are still live, and I can hear myself on the feed. They seem to not be unmuting themselves.
Mr. Norris, you need to unmute yourself if you wish to speak.
Uh, I believe that's all of them.
That's all of them? Okay. And we were online, and they were, uh, given the opportunity to speak, and just for some reason did not. Okay. Now, we're also gonna call on the, uh, piece, the people that were here in the chamber, uh, to come forward, please. Uh, the, the ones that already spoke, let's give them an opportunity first, they have an opportunity to speak now. Just hit your name for the record, Miss Sanchez.
Ruth Sanchez.
You got it, thank you.
One time I can say hi to you guys again, 'cause, you know, I already said. But, um, this is no laughing matter, even though I'm laughing right now, but I wanna go ahead and just give you more statistic. Uh, pre-pandemic to now, we had two hundred and forty-six deaths, they're all unhoused individuals. Um, and actually, as of, from January to this, uh, to now, forty-six, uh, individuals. Um, so again, stop postponing the decision of doing it. And just for the record, the organizations I represent, one of them doesn't even ask for money, the other one has not asked, and the other one, you know, we already were told no, but the work's still being done, and trust me, we've done a tremendous amount, uh, for those that join us and see the work that we do. But it brings us back to, we need to get something done, and it's not fair. So far, every time we keep pushing it back is because the mayor mysteriously gets sick, and, you know, I can sympathize for somebody getting sick, but come on, you know, how many times are you gonna keep missing, and if you cannot do the job, let's go ahead and move on and get somebody else, because he keeps, I feel like he's just trying to destroy everything before he leaves. And Shankman, if you're still listening, if there's something that we can do, please sign me up, because this is just getting so tired of it, um, and people's life are at stake, so we need to move on. So, I know that Richard, as well as Bishop, you guys have these conflict, but just like, uh, Shankman said, he proved himself from voting on those, on those, uh, specific organizations. You know, I mean, unless we cannot trust you guys not to do the right thing, I'm pretty sure you guys can go ahead and make that decision today, but let's move forward. You know, again, you guys have people's life in your hands, that's two hundred and forty-six life, you know, that you guys couldn't prevent it. I know people are gonna say, "Well, what about Lancaster?" Let's remember, we don't have nothing to offer here in Palmdale, that's why they go to Lancaster, because the shelters in Lancaster, all the other, whatever, you know, um, it, you know, whatever we have or resources, they're in Lancaster, we don't have nothing here in Palmdale. So, that's why they are out there, and it's not only people without education, I have a nurse, I have a couple mechanics, they're out there, I have babies. Right now, I have a nineteen-year-old that is pregnant, that I'm trying to get her into somewhere. You know, so we have twenty-two kids that we have housed, twelve women so far. So, we've been able to house so many of them, but this is just, you know, on the short amount of time that I've been doing this, the Second Chance Project. And again, thank you for those that do push for this, and to the other ones, shame on you. Now, back to my comment with the commission, please, stop appointing one person to multiple seats. Give the chance to the other people so that they can actually be part of this transition, so they can be part of the program. Let's go ahead and stop letting the mayor appoint his friend to multiple things, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Let's see, there was someone else that spoke previously, does she wish to speak?
Rosie Mayonella. And Marcos Alvarez is next.
Mr. Alvarez, good evening.
All right, how do you follow up with that last call, right? Um, number one, I have a lot of respect for the positions you are in right now. Uh, I, I clearly wouldn't wanna be in it at this point in time, a lot of challenges ahead moving forward. One of them being, since December, uh, this A V measure was on the desk of the City Hall, right here. Since December, right? And I know it was on charter territory, how do we distribute these funds? Who do we distribute these funds? What are the guidelines? And what I just said is still being discussed. Not only is it being discussed, whether it's intentional or not, it's being delayed. Now, Mr. Proteme, uh, Law, you stated that, uh, because of, uh, conflict of interest, and you have to recuse yourself. That right there, I've heard it the last three times, which leads me to believe, what are the special interests here? What's happening here, right? Because the true victims that are paying the price of these, uh, unable to put them in the agenda are the people that are seeking that help, not since last month or the month before, but since December. Remember, we voted for this, the taxpayer agreed to this, yet it has not been finalized. So, I would hope that as all of you continue to fight for the public in the right way, we find a solution to this continued delay, again, in August, sooner than later, so we can get these funds for what they were intended for and who they were intended for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here? Mr. Flores? Congratulations on your retirement, by the way.
Thank you, Honorable, um, Mayor Protemp, uh, City Council. Uh, we submitted to you a written document on behalf of Alba, uh, several months ago, maybe a month, month and a half ago, where we spelled out the position of our organization related to A V measure funds, and we made several recommendations in that paper. Uh, I want to reiterate a couple. Um, uh, we need to stress that you have an unprecedented opportunity to help the most disadvantaged, and I'm using the term disadvantaged because it was, it came out of the COVID crisis. And the Los Angeles Public Health Department started using that term when COVID hit, and what they said was, "It was the most disadvantaged that are getting impacted the most negatively." And of course, that included Latinos and African-Americans and L G T B Q populations and the poor. You thought you were going to raise twelve million dollars, it turns out that you've got twenty-one in the coffers, and you're looking at twenty-three in the future. You have an unprecedented opportunity to help this population right now, and we said it in our paper, you know, please, uh, we know of Latino businesses that have not been served right by this city, uh, they come and they ask for support, but they don't get it. Uh, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce isn't doing, uh, right by them either, uh, uh, not a whole lot of them, and we know that there's a lot of African-American Latinos and Puerto whites who also need services. Ruth keeps mentioning the homeless. So, again, the solution to your issue, so that you don't delay anymore, take each applicant one by one, and whoever has that relationship, that, uh, conflict, recuse themselves for that particular agency, and then let the others vote on it, yea or nay. Then go to the next one, and the next one, and the next one. This way, the majority of you can vote on each of the, you know, twenty-some applicants, and get that done with, over and done with, but there's still a bigger issue, uh, and that is cu- cutting, uh, a large piece of funding, four point five million is what we recommended, to be used to, uh, target the underserved, that disadvantaged community. Put aside five point four million dollars for that particular purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Our rationale is spelled out in that document.
Thank you very much. That's been received. Anybody else in the council chamber wishing to speak?
His item is for a non-agenda item.
That's for a non-agenda item.
So, uh, you'll notice at the end of the agenda, there's, um, for non-agenda items, that's where it's on this particular agenda, so you can speak at that time.
Okay. All right, anyone else?
No, no, sir.
I don't see why you're censoring me.
You're not being censored? Yeah, Mr. Hernandez, you're not being censored, it's, it's on the, it's on the agenda. Mr. Hernandez, it's not on the agenda, you're not going to speak.
So, and, and when we get to the point of the agenda where it says "non-agenda items", then that's when you'll have your opportunity to speak.
Thank you. All right. There not being anyone else to speak, is there a motion to close the public comment?
Motion to close the public comment, is there somebody on the line over there?
Oh, is there someone, okay.
Richard Norris, feel free to unmute yourself.
Mr. Norris, can you hear us? Mr. Norris? Are we online, Mr. Lopez? Okay.
Yes, our feed's still going, Mr. Norris, maybe your mic isn't connected the right way, it's not still like on the right source.
I, I'm thinking there must be some kind of glitch, 'cause I know these people know how to use this and how to unmute themselves, so I'm a little confused as to what's going on. Um, maybe there's, uh, something going on in the, the main system throughout the state, I don't know. Can we give them an opportunity to speak later, once we get everything working?
I don't see why not.
Maybe if there's a telephone number they can call instead of using Zoom.
Yeah, maybe, maybe that would be better.
Correct, yes, there is a number that they can call in.
So, as long as our feed is working, we have the legal right to proceed, but certainly we could allow them the opportunity to speak later.
Okay. So, there was a motion to close com, uh, public comment by Mr. Correo?
Yes.
Was there a second, I thought, Mr. Bishop? Okay. Call for, call for the question.
Mayor Proteme Loa?
Yes.
Councilmembers Correo?
Yes.
Bishop? And Bettencourt?
Yes, but with the opportunity for those people that are having technical difficulties to be able to call in later.
Certainly. All right, um, item number twelve, Consent Calendar, all matters listed under the Consent Calendar will be enacted by one motion unless an item or items are returned or pulled by the council, in which case the item will be removed from the calendar and will be considered separately following this portion of the agenda. Is there any member that wishes to pull any item off the consent calendar? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bettencourt, second by Mr. Correo, call the count and call the law, please.
Mayor Proteme Loa?
Yes.
Councilmembers Correo?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Bettencourt?
Yes.
Okay, we're at thirteen point one. Who is going to present on that?
Good evening, Mayor Proteme, sorry about that, and council members. Uh, my name is Leslie Andrews, I'm Business License Coordinator, and I am here before you tonight for consideration, hold on just a moment, sorry about that. Okay, I'm here before you tonight for consideration of Resolution Number C C two zero two two dash zero seven one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving gun dealer permit two two dash zero seven for Pang Way Incorporated, doing business as Beefed, located at five five zero West Rancho Vista Boulevard, Suite G. Beefed is a sporting goods store within a twelve-hundred-square-foot tenant space, with gun sales being less than thirty percent of the overall sales. As shown on the aerial photo, the sporting goods store location is within the yellow-shaded area. Whoops. Thank you for that lovely map. Um, recommendation is to adopt Resolution C C two zero two two dash zero seven one, approving gun dealer permit two two dash zero seven for Beefed. I am available for questions, and the applicant, Paul Rangel, is here tonight if you have any questions for him.
Should we have the, uh? Yeah, there's gonna be a public comment on this. Um, so, have you read the, uh, resolution into the record?
Yes, I did.
Okay, very good. So, at this point, we'll open, uh, public comment on this item, unless there's any questions of, of staff.
I, I do have a question, um, regarding this being part of a strip mall with businesses on either side of it, or, or at least on one side of it, I can't really tell. My concern is, you know, I, I, I have a job where I read a lot of police reports, and, um, there's some businesses in our community where, where people will actually tunnel through the drywall into a business. What is adjacent to them, and what have their, what are they putting in place to prevent people from going through the wall or through the ceiling to get to these guns?
Um, can I bring up the applicant, Paul Rangel? 'Cause he'll be able to explain this very well for you.
Hello, everybody, I am Paul Rangel, I am the applicant. Uh, in regards to your question, um, or your concern, I should say, uh, when I was originally looking for, uh, retail space, one of the main concerns was the tunneling and from the roof access. The particular location that I did decide on has a twenty-foot drop from the roof to the floor of the business, with the, the, the ceiling being ten foot above. So, as for roof access to getting into it, that is almost none or not possible. It is obviously possible, but is not easily accessible. In addition, the roof access is in a locked electrical room with only keys, uh, that are available from the landlord themselves. Uh, in addition to that, as part of the, uh, strengthening of the retail location, I am going to be adding additional camera systems in that, uh, roof access, as well as on the roof and on the exterior of the building. As for being able to tunnel through from another unit, uh, I am actually, uh, putting, uh, quarter-inch steel sheet.
You don't have to give us the details in case people are watching. Just saying.
Steel, steel sheeting and, uh, plywood will be, um, added for extra protection from the other units.
Okay.
And the exterior walls are all, um, uh, cinder block and, uh, filled with concrete, so.
Okay.
That's not the issue.
Um, and in the past, um, when there's been some civil unrest in, in the, the area, um, other gun places have, had the ability to put all of their stock in gun safes.
Everything is in gun safes.
Okay, just wanna make sure, I'm just thinking ahead, trying to make sure that we don't get guns on the street that don't need to be there, it's a real sensitive issue, so.
Yeah, no, as of right now, I'm actually already in, uh,
Okay.
uh, selling air guns, and every night I still, um, uh, play the process of putting everything away in multiple safes that are, uh, bolted to the floor in the back of the, the building, uh, which is a, a concrete floor, so they're all protected.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Did anybody else have any other questions or concerns?
No, I, okay, we're gonna go ahead and open, uh, public comment at this point. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Mr. Hernandez?
I find it very insulting, Eugene Hernandez, I very insult, insulting to have this gun shop open up. There's nineteen children in Uvalde, Texas, and two teachers who would oppose more guns in this society. There, there's people in Highland Park, Illinois, who were killed with the AR-15, the one you're gonna justify having this gun dealer do, and I think that's very insulting to the community. It's totally lack of, of perception that you're encouraging a society with more guns. There should be less guns in this society, you know? When you, when you have a moment of silence, Mr. Protemp, you should have a moment of silence for the children who were killed in Uvalde.
We did that.
And, and the, no, you didn't have it this morning, it's today.
Not after that.
And, and the cowardly cops who failed to protect them, 'cause that's a false narrative, that the only way you stop a bad guy with a gun is a good guy with a gun. You know, that's total BS, and I oppose having another gun shop where people can buy the gun and go in a rampage here in Antelope Valley, and this, this millionaire gun owner gets all the profits.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
I thought about if I should say something or not, but the best way I can say it is this way. It's an opportunity for a businessman
It's an opportunity for a businessman to make profit, right? This gentleman, Paul Rangel, is not breaking the law. He's trying to create a business, but if you have been sleeping under a rock, you know there has been killings and killings and killings, and guess what? There's been more killings at the hand of legally bought guns, right? So it's a sensitive issue for me, and I will close with this. As a teenager, working at Taco Bell, as we were closing, a gun was put in my face, legally bought. As I stood in the corner of where I grew up, another gun stood in my face, legally bought. And as I visited seven years ago in Boy Heights, driving around, we were shot up, our car was, and none of us were hit, but we were lucky to be alive. So you can understand my position, if it's bias in nature or not, and I get it, the Constitution, the right to bear arms. They said that in seventeen seventy-six, not in two thousand twenty-two. The right to bear arms, as fair to say, meant something different than with the type of guns that were built then, contrary to the type of guns that people get a hold of now, whether it be in the black market or legally. It's a tough decision to make for all of you, including some of us here who own guns. So I get it. It's a tough decision to move forward in deciding if you're gonna support a gun ownership right here in Palmdale. Think about the consequence. This is a, this will make your, your position as a council member, what is gonna be your legend? Hey, you remember when I supported that businessman? And then one way or another, something didn't go right because he sold it legally. They provided the right paperwork, but something happened. And as we stand here discussing this, guess what? It's only a matter of time before somebody legally has a gun and is gonna go out there and create chaos in the United States. This is what you're dealing with. It's not an issue that we should take light. I support businesses here and to stimulate the economy, but this one right here hits home for many of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on this? Please state your name again, please.
Good evening again. Laurel Forrest, longtime resident for a decade of Palmdale. I'm a lifelong member of the National Rifle Association, what is considered the infamous NRA. I was trained in marksmanship and gun safety at the FBI Academy in Quantico, Virginia, while I was in residence there. As a member of the US Department of Justice, I am a strong believer in the responsible use of firearms. However, I believe that as a past advocate, starting thirty years ago, to stop tobacco use and tobacco smoking in public places, one of the strongest efforts that we made successfully was to lobby for all, like Rite Aid and CVS and major chain stores to stop selling tobacco. Why? Because the fewer people that see it, especially kids, and they see it as an acceptable purchase for them to make, the fewer people are able to buy it and the fewer people think it's socially acceptable. Therefore, I think that analogy holds with gun shops. I've bought some of my handguns and long guns here in Palmdale at a gun dealer high wet desert, which since went, went out of business on Avenue Q. I don't think we need more gun shops for the reason that see guns, buy guns, use guns makes it socially acceptable. And while this gentleman wants to make money on a business, I suggest that it would be just as efficacious for his profit motive to pick another merchandise to sell and not have kids and adults walking by and saying, oh, it must be okay to buy guns. Let's go buy, let's go register and take the gun safety course and let's buy guns and own guns. We don't need any more of that type of purchase and we don't need the infiltration of any more handguns and long guns in our society at all. And I think this would go a long way showing people, this is not a good thing, not a popular thing. If you're not professionally trained and have a career professional clearance in order to do this and be a licensed gun owner, we don't need to encourage it by seeing it as so available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone wish, else wishing to speak on this item? Is there a motion? Oh, yes, go on. Please step forward. State your name.
David Harris, Community Development Center USA, and I'm not a gun owner, but I believe in my right to show up to this gentleman's shop and purchase my gun. If I need to, if I want to. My children are trained in it. I'm trained in it, but I don't own one, but I like to know that I can get one legally if I wanted one. And I think it's up to residents to protect themselves. We hear so much about gun violence across America. It is there. It will continue to be there, whether or not this dealer is able to open his store or not, the guns will still be there. If you look at the statistics of criminality, it is the criminals, not people like me that are misusing the guns. And I think when you have responsible council members asking, are you gonna lock them up at night? What's the ceiling link? Are you taking precautions? Are we looking forward? I, I think we, we owe it to ourselves to keep our rights. And every single time we turn something like this down, we diminish our constitutional right. On another note, this is one of the best city employees that we have. I got to work with her a month ago, and so thank you. For, we now have a business license because of this city employee. So Leslie, thank you. And since you're here, I needed to say that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Harris? Do you have somebody online now? Okay.
Jason Zink, feel free to unmute yourself.
Mr. Zink?
Yeah, I just wanna say that I support the applicant. The only person that can protect your last breath of life on earth or your family's is you. Not a police officer, not the government, but you. I fully support this, and I think the comments by Councilwoman Button Court was very good, and I support this applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zink. Anyone else online or on the phone?
No more for now.
Anyone else in the chamber wishing to speak?
Yes, Ruth Sanchez.
Please, Ms. Sanchez.
I was gonna go ahead and speak on the thirteen point one item, but after my last statement, not even five minutes, I received a threatening message from the mayor. So he's so sick in ICU that he's sending the messages. So I would like to read it to you all. It says, get your facts straight. Who have I appointed to multiple assignments? Be careful. Those are threatening messages coming from the mayor, from the actual, it says Steve Halfour, elected mayor, City of Palmdale. So I wanna go ahead and let it be known publicly, he has made this threat. I'm gonna go ahead and make copies and, and seek legal counsel if I have to. But these threats that he's making because he doesn't like what he hears.
Ms. Sanchez, I hate to interrupt you, but are you gonna speak to the issue here on thirteen point one?
This is important to me because I am being threatened by your mayor.
Okay, I understand.
So I wanna go ahead and make sure that everybody hears, and I have the email that he just sent. And he's supposed to be so sick that we can't even go ahead and vote on the measure of E. He's so sick in ICU, yet he is well enough to make this threat, okay? And that's not okay. He keeps making threats. And if you guys are okay, now you guys wanna go ahead and continue and postpone this? That is a joke. He is not sick because he's well enough to go ahead and send me messages, email within like not even five minutes of my statement, making these threats.
Ms. Sanchez, I appreciate the comments you're making. I was hospitalized two years ago. I was able to text and email during the hospitalization.
That's good to know.
That's a possibility.
It's a possibility that he can make threats?
No, it's a possibility that he could be in the hospital and and use the texting machine, texting equipment. All right, is there anyone else on thirteen point one?
I have one more. Amanda Palmer.
State your name, please.
Sorry, Amanda Palmer. Okay, I am here in support of thirteen point one. I think that I should have my right to bear arms. It is in the Constitution. I cannot protect, as a woman, I cannot protect myself physically with my own body strength. And so I feel vulnerable because of that. And I think that it is something that, you know, it's not just a gun issue, like it's to keep myself safe as well and my children at home safe as well, if my husband's out of town or whatever on business. So we cannot be shutting down these businesses who are trying to allow us to practice our Second Amendment and our freedoms. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What was your name again, please?
Amanda Palmer.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on thirteen point one?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
So I can't remember what the latest statistic was, but it's in the three hundreds, three hundred and forty-some mass shootings in the last year. And I keep thinking to myself, you know, what is the solution to that problem? And I understand it is a terribly complicated issue, not one easily resolved. And we've been, as a country, dealing with it, I think, since it probably started. But I do believe that the city can take measures that may allow the gentleman to do his business, but at the same time assure that there's abiding of all these restriction laws that, you know, prohibit. He made a comment, somebody made a comment and said, you know, most of the killings that are happening are taking place by individuals who have purchased illegal weapons. And I don't think that's true. I believe the opposite is true. A lot of the killings and certainly the last ones we've seen, the mass shootings, have been done by weapons that were purchased legally. And there's all these different policies that are being looked at to restrict and try to control who is it that gets to purchase. Maybe you should take a look at that first before you make a decision. Start looking and see what's in place and maybe make some of your own before you say yay to this business. Yeah, before you grant this license. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in the chamber?
We have one more online.
Okay.
Mario Presents, feel free to unmute yourself.
Was there any other person?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. What's your name, please?
This is Mario Presents.
Oh, hello, Mr. Presents. Go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Loa. I wanna speak on this agenda item, and I wanna say that we need to have more businesses selling legal firearms to protect the community. As a gay man myself, I am a victim. I can be very easily a victim walking down the street. Someone doesn't like the way I walk. It happens very often in the Latino community where Latinos attack people who are trans. I've seen it in South Central Los Angeles. I've seen it all up and down. As a matter of fact, we had a trans woman just this last summer get attacked on the streets of West Hollywood. So when someone can't physically defend themselves and they're put in a danger where they have to protect their lives, this is why we have the Second Amendment. And as a gay man, I completely support that. The idea that you guys are even considering not granting this license is deeply, deeply upsetting. I have friends who are disabled, permanently disabled in a wheelchair, and they learned that using something like an AR-15 allows them to actually safely defend their home without having the kick and the, having to pull down a, a, a single bolt action because their arms don't actually reach. These people are wheelchair bound, and what do we wanna do? We wanna make it more difficult for these people to protect themselves? I disagree with Mr. Flores that he says that these mass shoot, America is happening with mass shootings. The number one mass shooting country or demographic actually happens in Africa where Christians are persecuted by people with guns. So when you have someone being persecuted, the last thing you wanna do is disarm them or disarm the community. So I highly encourage you guys to, to open this new, this new retailer in our community because for the safety of our community, for the safety of minorities in our community, for the safety of our children. Because when someone bad does something else, just like in Indiana, it was a twenty-two-year-old that stopped that person doing a bad thing. The police were on their way and less than a minute later, that person was neutralized who was doing harm to other people. Those are facts that you cannot deny, and those are facts that will live on forever. And please, 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 allow this retailer to open up his business here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online?
Yes, there is Kevin Shankman. Feel free to unmute yourself.
Mr. Shankman?
You know, so if y'all wanna have a bunch of gun stores and strip clubs and adult bookstores and liquor stores and, you know, whatever, that's, it ain't my problem. But where I do live is the city of Malibu. It's got twenty-one miles of scenic beauty along the coast. You know how many gun stores it has? Zero. Why? Because in nice neighborhoods, they don't have gun stores. I'll just leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No more at this time.
All right. Yes, sir. Please state your name and you have three minutes.
Trolleys. For someone that has been trained in using firearms, I've been trained, I was in the military, the army. Been trained in the M-16, M-14, two oh three grenade launcher, nine millimeter Beretta. And for someone to say that I want to bring weapons to the community, I mean, every person has the right to defend themselves. But we have to take a look at if these weapons are purchased illegally, what red flags are we looking at in regards to people that are purchasing them? They say that there are good people that are, that wanted to defend themselves and their family, and you should have the right to do that. But are we taking a look at who else has access to those weapons? Are we taking, are children who have access to those weapons? Are we looking at their mental state in regards to who has access to those weapons? Because it's not the guy that purchases the weapons. It's their, either their child or their friend that has access to the weapon and they're shooting someone. Now, I believe that if you want a firearm to protect yourself, you should. My right is your, my opinion to not have a weapon should not infringe on your right, your right to own one. But for the person that is the applicant, I just want you to think about how this will impact our community in regards to who has access, true access to those weapons. You know, we all want to protect our family because we all know, if you call 911, we're talking about at least seven to ten minutes before they actually arrive. And a person that's invading your home can do a lot of damage between seven to ten minutes. So do I think that people should have access to weapons? You know, I'm just one guy. I'm just one guy. I mean, I wouldn't, I particularly wouldn't have a weapon myself because I have kids, but if someone else wanted weapons in their home, they should, they should be able to have them. But we also have to draw the line. Is that person in the right mental state to actually purchase a weapon legally? So I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Is there a motion to close public comment on this item?
Motion to close, over here.
Okay, call the question, please. Yes.
Councilmembers Carrillo?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Button Court?
Yes.
Very good. So the resolution's been read into the record. I did have a question of you. Yeah. And that is, is there a legal right that would affect the city if we turn this thing down? In other words, does the applicant have the right to bring an action against the city if this item were to be turned down?
So if you, so there are findings in the code, so if you're able to, so section five point zero four two hundred B lists out the required findings, so if you're able to make or not make the findings, the sole legal challenge that the city could have would be that you, that you did not make, that you did not have facts that supported the ultimate determination which you made one way or the other.
And that was in section?
It's in the municipal code, sorry. So if you, so this ordinance, this resolution is designed to approve. So if you would desire to deny, then we would need to have facts in the record which would able, which would allow you to deny. So you would need to ensure that there are those facts. So for example, you would need to determine whether the building, structure, premises, or the equipment used. Or the equipment used to conduct the business failed to comply with applicable health zoning, fire, building and safety laws. Or the se- uh or the state of the city. Uh there are other requirements, but essentially they're, they're fairly straightforward. So, um you would need to have facts in the record that would help, that would establish whether. Those requirements and there are other requirements, but that, um whether they've been made.
All right. Okay, all right. So uh is there a motion uh to approve this resolution?
I made the motion to approve.
Is there a second? Very good. Uh any discussion at this point?
I I'd like to to say something. Um California has some of the strictest, strictest gun control laws of any state in the nation. We are being used as a model for all of these other states that continue to have such a problem on their hands. Because they don't control their, their gun sales and their background checks and their mental health issues. State of California has what's called a prohibited persons list in which law enforcement is notified when a person has certain criteria. That puts them on a list and then law enforcement will go out and take those weapons from those people. Can we do a better job? Absolutely. Can we do a better job doing mental health evaluations and have red flag warnings put in place to help alleviate issues? With mental health issues with people's firearms? Yes, we can continue moving forward, absolutely. Um I I was raised with guns. My daughter was raised with guns. It's it's part of our family, you know, it's just what we do. We run an all-girl shooting team at one point. I'm surrounded by guns all day long because of where I work. They don't intimidate me. I don't see them as a threat. I don't wanna ever take away a person's right to protect themselves. I was a single mom my entire life. And I always felt more comfortable having a weapon in my home to protect myself if I ever needed to. And thank God I never needed to, but at least I had the option. But what I made sure of is that I went to the range on a regular basis. My daughter, who was on the shooting team with me, went to the range obviously on a regular basis. And I would encourage this, this gun uh store owner, every time you sell a gun. Give them information on where they can go to practice. Nobody should ever, ever own a gun unless they go to the range and practice, practice, practice. Because it's gonna be your worst enemy instead of your savior if it comes time to use it. So please, I just, I beg you. Any gun owner, uh gun shop owner in the Antelope Valley, please make sure that you're passing information on to your customers about how to practice with that firearm. And that's all I have to say.
Mister Creo, Mister Collins.
I respect every amendment in the constitution, the second amendment I do too. I do believe that we all have the right to defend ourselves, defend our families and defend our nation. It is not a question of when the next school shooting will happen. It it will happen. We know that it will. I do believe that as a nation, we need to do a much better job with mental health issues that we are facing because of COVID. Because of many other reasons. But to me, every time we experience what happened in Ivaldi, the last event. We politicians and higher level politicians tend to come out and say, our heart and prayers go with you. That doesn't do anything to those parents who lost their children. I cannot imagine what it would be like. I have kids in school. I want them to be protected. I want it to feel safe when they go to learn. As a parent, I believe that we all parents expect the same thing when we take our children to school. Whether when we drop them off or they go to school by themselves. And because we keep seeing that more and more, um and again. Saying my thoughts and prayers go to the families, that doesn't do a thing for us. Um tha- that's all I have to say for this item.
Mister Bishop, any comment?
Well, I wanna thank everyone for their comments either way and also uh uh my colleagues up here for their comments. Um yeah, it's never easy and these are definitely sensitive times and it's a sensitive subject. But uh I do believe uh in what Ms. Betancourt said. She has a lot of experience working for the sheriff's department. And uh I also, these issues are on a federal level. And and I have a a great deal of respect for the laws and and what we're entitled to. And uh I believe that the city shouldn't be uh trampling on those laws and those rights.
All right, um what I'd like to do is have you step up and I have a couple of questions of you. Step up, please, and uh and please state your name.
Leslie Andrews.
Leslie, uh I'm gonna ask you some questions regarding um this application. Can you tell us whether the building, uh or the equipment to conduct this business fails to comply with any applicable health? Zoning, fire, building and safety laws of the state or the city?
The zoning clearance was approved by the planning department and building and safety. So it passed all of those, the health and safety.
So they review all of the building safety rules that are required for a business of this type uh to be uh issued a a license?
Yes.
Okay. Uh to your knowledge, and um I'm asking whether uh this is an inquiry that, that you or anyone in the, in the city staff would have made. Uh has the applicant made any false, misleading or fraudulent statement of material fact in the application for the business permit? Or in any reported statement required to be filed with the director or the city?
No.
Is the business prohibited by any local, state statute, rule or regulation? Or prohibited in a particular location or zone by any law, statute, rule or regulation?
No.
All right, thank you. Any questions by anybody? Okay, so I I don't, you know, in my estimation, and I know that it's controversial and I, and believe me, I'm. I'm troubled by this entire thing, but um we have to follow the rules and we have to follow law and const- and the constitution. So, um I don't believe that there's been any evidence that the city council. Uh could deny this without infringing on the rights of the applicant. So, um unless there's any other further comment, I will call for the question. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
Council members, Cariyo?
No.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Betancourt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Will now move on to thirteen point two, public hearing and review of the proposed resolution.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and council members. My name is Leslie Andrews, the business license coordinator. I am here before you tonight for consideration of resolution number CC two zero two two dash zero seven two. A resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale approving entertainment permit two two dash zero eight. And dance permit two two dash zero nine for La Rocco's restaurant located at sixteen forty-five. East Palmdale Boulevard, Suite G and H. La Rocco's is a bona fide restaurant with the primary use as sit-down dining. As shown in the aerial photo, the restaurant location is within the yellow shaded area. The applicant is proposing to provide live entertainment such as karaoke, DJs and small band ensembles. With a dance floor not to exceed thirty percent of the gross floor area. The proposed use is beneficial and desirous to the community and is consistent with the purpose, intent and standards of the Palmdale Municipal Code. Recommendation is to adopt resolution number CC two zero two two dash zero seven two. Approving entertainment permit two two dash zero eight and dance permit two two dash zero nine for La Rocco's restaurant. I am available for questions and the applicant, Gilto Laro, or his representative are here tonight if you have any questions for them.
Very good. Um at this point, I will go ahead and open the uh public hearing and receive testimony. Um is there anyone online on this thirteen point two? Mister Lopez?
None at this time.
Pardon?
None at this time.
None at this time. Yeah, in the council chamber, Mister Hernandez?
I was just curious, um usually when a a place opens up, I guess they're gonna sell uh alcohol beverage. Don't they have to get ABC permit in order to do this? Alcohol beverage control from the state?
We we can interact. We'll answer your question after the public hearing is closed. Is that correct, Mr.? That's correct.
Okay. Look, Kathy, what's attorney doing here?
Well, it's your moment to speak to this item. Anyone else in the chamber wishing to speak?
I'm representing AB Lulak. I no longer represent Pueblo Salud. But uh you know that I've been addressing alcohol issues for the past twenty-two years here in the city of Palmdale and forty-seven. And other areas, forty-seven years in other areas. So we're concerned about um the business seeking this license for a dance hall. Whether or not uh it's going to sell alcohol and if it is, is it a general license or a uh beer and wine license? And the hours of operation, because they weren't mentioned, um we've had. Situations in East Palmdale uh before where businesses have had. Dancing going on and um they've turned out to be um not good business. Uh partners for our community. Uh there was a lot of uh drug sales and and other things going on. We all know it. We all know it and I'm not afraid to say it openly. We don't know what's gonna happen at La Rocco's, uh but history tells us we should proceed very, very carefully. So again, um I would recommend that you, um if you're gonna grant this. Limit the operating hours to something reasonable, you know, usually they want to be open till. A- as long as they can, two o'clock in the morning, we would advise against that. Uh maybe twelve the latest, uh start closing at eleven, but don't take it past twelve, uh that kind of thing. So, um, please consider. Thank you.
Thanks.
It's already in place and they do have an alcohol license.
Yes.
I I guess the questions I have regarding the hours is in the, the handout that you gave us. It says that the hours of operation of this business is Monday through Thursday, nine AM to ten PM. Friday through Sunday, it's nine AM to twelve AM. Are they expecting to have music and dancing the entire time that the place is open? Or is it gonna be limited to say seven to ten? Uh or is it strictly anytime they want during their operating hours?
Yeah, you you.
Okay.
Sure, come on up, sir. State your name, sir.
Ray Saad, the name private consultant for the applicant. Trying to help them obtain his proper permits, which I've had thirty-eight years experience all over the counties and everywhere. Being a former delegate out here in California for many years, but I, I'm really happy to see what I'm seeing here. And you know, people sometimes speak, but they have the privilege, but I'm always with the federal government. You guys are doing a good job and I'm not just saying this because I wanna paint it and try to get these beautiful people. Honest people to, um they apply for every business license here. They apply for all the, the, the legal on the beer and wine, they have that. And they had a good track record. They never had problems there before up to now. And the reason why they're asking for uh the, the dance hall permit and for the um. Uh for the live entertainment and karaoke, this is gonna be not a wild nightclub. It's not. It's a family ornament. He's a businessman. They both there, they live here. And believe me, if they were a title, I've seen in my thirty-eight years where they wanted to start something big. I would say no, I don't have the time. Not because I don't care and I don't wanna help them. Cause I don't cater to people who wanna destroy a, a community. And I want you to honor that. I've known them for many years and believe me. All they want is to have a little something that they invested years in this place. And to help them pay with, you know, the rent and the other things that go with it. They have, they're feeding a lot of families there because they hired a lot of employees and they're paying them. You know, to the checks and stuff, so they're, they're paying into the system here also in Palmdale. But if you have people that are working behind closed doors, like there's one uh in that particular area. There's a place that does uh fitness or something like that, they do a lot of stuff, seven days a week. And they open up back there and they think it's gonna be them. They don't even have entertainment. It's not them.
I think the question that was posed was uh from what time to what time with the entertainment uh?
Okay, the entertainment that they want on it, it's on these days. Monday, Tuesdays and Wednesdays from nine AM to ten PM.
Should they, they wanna have entertainment from nine AM to ten PM?
No, the entertainment, if they were to have something later on Thursdays, they would like it from nine to twelve thirty. On Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays until one thirty or two if it, if it allowed on Friday and Saturday.
Are you talking about two in the morning?
Yeah.
Okay, but the report says that the oper- hours of operation will be from nine AM to ten PM. That's um Monday through Thursday. And Friday through Sunday from nine AM to twelve AM. So it would not go past uh midnight.
Okay.
That's what the report states and that's what I understand is the application.
Okay, then if, if there's any way that at least on Friday and Saturday to increase that until one o'clock? Just on those two nights, that's all.
A- and what happens to their business if they violate the CUP? Can you get up to microphones? I I need these, these applicants to be very aware of what the repercussions will be if they violate the CUP.
So if they violate the CUP, that can be taken back to the planning commission and revoked. Now, if they are approved the dance and entertainment permit and they um violate those restrictions. That are in place for that, that can be brought also back to, it can be denied their entertainment and dance permit. And the applicant can um uh request for, to come before city council. To have it um looked at and find out if that would still, if council would still reinstate that denial. Or, you know, keep it.
And can I ask what business, uh what businesses are on either side of this business? I can't tell from the map, sorry.
Not know the answer to that.
Because I certainly don't want one business to interfere with the productive business of another. So I need to know what is on either side of this business and what their operating hours are.
Are on each side of La Rocco's?
Right, the businesses that are on each side of you?
Sir, why don't you step up and, why don't you step up and state your name?
I need the actual applicants to come up and answer these questions. Yeah.
Say your name, please.
Uh my name is Gilto Lara.
Gilto Lara, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, uh my neighbor is a market, food market. One on the, on the left side and the right side is a lady that uh for jewelry, gold.
And and what hours are you planning to have loud music, dancing, entertainment, et cetera? During, during what hours are you planning on having this?
From seven.
Seven, i- in the evening?
PM.
Until what time?
Uh we would like to one o'clock.
Welcome. But the CUP, the condition used permit under which you're going to be operating if this is approved. Is going to be on Monday through Thursday from nine AM to ten PM and Friday through Sunday from nine AM to twelve AM, in other words midnight. We're not considering any times outside of that. Would you be willing to co- to, to keep those laws?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I mean, can we do, we do check that?
Yes.
So.
And Mayor Pro Tim, um I I have real issues with them having music and dancing. And Mayor Protim, um I I have real issues with them having music and dancing and entertainment and that type of thing during the business hours of an adjacent business. If they were a freestanding building, this would be completely different for me. But because their business will be impacting businesses throughout that strip mall, I have very real concerns.
Okay, um I'm gonna chime in here a little bit. To address that particular concern is Betancourt, you may remember the liquor store, the pyramid, it's in the same shopping center. Uh as far as the hours of operation and conditions of approval, they went through the conditional use permit to sell alcohol and they are going to be conditioned to open during those business hours. Now, they can always request that they can stay open later, uh and that's something that we can discuss. But just the fact to me that we finally have a business that wants to provide entertainment on the east side, that's a big deal to me. There's plenty of times that me and my wife, she will say once in a blue moon, but I take her out and where do we go? All the way over there. We don't have anything here, we had um um La Palma.
It's still going, it's still going.
It's one of them that is nearby, but they've been impacted by COVID and the way the this. And they are being restricted now because they've been there a couple of times by nine-thirty, ten o'clock and they're shutting down because there is no business. And just the fact again that we have an opportunity to have something on that side of the freeway, that's a big deal to me. And they're responsible business owners, they've been in the business for many years, I've been to their restaurants, great pupusas, and they already have a liquor license, the staff report says that they're opening in April of twenty-twenty-one. I would encourage us to support these type of businesses. Because not only they're providing jobs, but they're providing entertainment for us, the east side residents. And there are conditions in the CUP, there is gonna be, and I looking at you, I can tell you that, because it's gonna be a new place for us to go. I think that that's something that we should take into consideration.
Yeah, I I you know, I I agree with you, we absolutely need things to do on the east side. I I I've been in the valley a very, very long time, since the mid-eighties, and I remember when you could pick half a dozen places to go dancing in the Al Valley. Tony Roma's, Black Angus, uh all all the different places you used to be able to dance in this community.
I I don't wanna lose track of the fact that.
I just wanna say that we we need the entertainment, I'm just concerned about the other residents in that strip mall. So if we could get an agreement that you'll keep it to a minimum, you know, the the music, the sound, the crowds, so it does not impact the adjacent businesses. That would make me feel much more confident in my vote.
Yeah, and and I think that um you know, you need to be a good neighbor to to these to these folks that are next to you here. So if there's an issue, you know, talk it over with them and 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 work it out. I I agree with uh with Mr. Kirby, we do need to have entertainment. Um but I don't wanna lose track of the fact that we're in the middle of public comment and I'm not sure that we've completed public comment yet. Your testimony was useful for us and I I'm satisfied that you intend to go by the requirements uh of the hours, they're very significant, okay? So uh at this point, uh did you wish to say something, ma'am? Was that a manager? Okay. She wants to add something tiny.
Déjanos, déjanos interpretar, if you want to.
Yeah. Essentially, she uh she's stating that there's a lot of people that they're going to be uh attracting the business and they're going to be uh employing quite a few people uh to serve this uh need. We support the police, we support the fire department. We're we're in agreement to go by the rules. We don't intend to have large dances, we just want to keep it on a familiar level. If other, uh personas mayores de edad?
Mayores como yo, personas mayores como yo.
Uh personas como you? If elder if elder persons will be there, they will be given the same service as anyone else. That's our point. We don't want the uh the community to be uncomfortable by what we're going to be doing, okay? Uh how long have you been in business there?
I am, I bought the restaurant, the restaurant in two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen?
It's been open uh over twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years, okay, and so as I understand it, there's a police background check that's made, the sheriff department checks things out. A report is made and I believe that that there's nothing untoward that's been reported about this, but I will you know, I'll ask Ms. Andrews to to address that in a minute, but I think that we do need to complete the public comment. Uh we were in the middle of that when we started asking you questions, so unless there's any further questions of anyone by anyone on the phone. Okay, all right, thank you all very much for your testimony.
So much, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir, thank you for being here. Um all right, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
We have Agent Ray Centillion.
Centillion?
Okay.
That was, that's done, okay?
Wonderful, and we have Ruth Sanchez.
Ms. Sanchez, please.
Yes, so um in regards to La Rocos, I don't know if you remember um when they first opened, um actually council member Carrillo, he was still working in Palmdale and um I actually assisted the original owners uh to do the CUP back then. Um as far as answering your question, um council member Ben Court, that shopping center is dead, so this is actually going to bring business to the other businesses. And again, I mean, I'm out here until late, so it's gonna be good that I can actually eat something else besides looking for a taco stand, you know, cuz at twelve o'clock, you know, it's only Denny's and IHOP and I get tired of that. But um I would say, you know, for us to really consider this because it is a benefit to the community, uh once again, it's going to attract more businesses to the other businesses that are there. I mean, we have Papa John's, we have Herbalife, other things, and they sell other shoes, but most of the time that shopping center is dead. You know, it is really dead, like come six, seven o'clock, it's dead, so this is actually going to allow the other businesses to actually benefit from that because people are gonna be coming in, so um again, I would recommend and I would urge the council to accept that and there's other businesses that are staying a lot, you know, open late. And we have them in shopping centers all the time, I mean, we have restaurants done by In-N-Out. They stay out open, yeah, they don't sell alcohol, but the other, there's other businesses there, they do. So, you know, I think that it's great, I'm not a beer drinker, you know, I very rare drink alcohol, but you know, it would be nice to actually go have a place where we can actually sit down and enjoy some good music and stuff, so. I would just say, just think about the east side and think about the community and think about the businesses um when you move forward to approving, I don't think one o'clock is really that bad. You know, and I at least for me, I'm going to appreciate coming and being able to eat something else besides a taco, even though I love them, but thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else? That's it? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um I encourage you guys to support this business and as Mr. Carrillo clearly said, uh it brings businesses to the east side, something we've been lacking consistently for years now. So I would hope that they approve and I'll bring my wife there and when, if you're concerned about one o'clock in the morning or two, I guarantee you at my age, I'm not even gonna make it to midnight, right? And a lot of us experience that, so having said that, um on a lighter note and a serious note at that, we're having this good conversation, right? And one of you asked what businesses are next to the left or to the right surrounding that area? We we clearly said there's a liquor store, but this topic about what businesses are next to the area on this was never asked when it came to the gun shop, something to think about when it comes to safety, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, is there anyone else wanting to make public comment on this item?
I have someone online.
Okay, very good.
Jason Zinkman, go get to him, mute yourself.
Who's the person?
Jason Zink.
Jason Zink, go ahead, Mr. Zink.
Yeah, I I fully support the uh person for the CUP. I'd actually support them to go till two PM, which is the state law, on Friday and Saturday. We need entertainment in Palmdale. We need it. We need a big time. I'm tired of going to the west side. These people seem like they're good-looking people, seem like they're respectful people, they've been around for a long time. Give them the opportunity to make Palmdale a nicer place to live, a fun place to live. CUPs are a privilege, not a right, and they know that, we can take it away from them at any time. As long as they uh, you know, work with the sheriff department to make sure things don't get out of hand and people have a fun time and they serve food till two o'clock, but people don't, you know, overdrink and don't have food to uh to eat, I think we should, we should let them go, let them have, let them be successful, let them make money, let them send their kids to college, this is the American dream. I fully support these people and I want this for Palmdale, and I think you guys should want this for Palmdale. And I fully support them. Why wouldn't you? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zink. Anyone else wishing to make public comment online or on the phone?
That's all for now.
Very good, anyone else in the chamber? Just state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Amanda Palmer and I do support um any business that wants to open up. It, we do in places to have fun. And um having the karaoke will be fun, I think that um especially the age group between, you know, everyone wants to, is looking to have fun. Especially nobody wants to go down below all the time to go have fun, so, yep, I agree with everybody's statements in this room, everybody.
Thank you, is there anyone else wishing to make any public comment on this item, Mr. Flores, come on up? I think you already spoke on this one, didn't you?
I interrupted, let's be honest.
All right, okay, Mr. Flores, come on up, by public acclaim, they want you to speak.
I hate doing this uh over and over and over again, it's something, not the wherever we've been, but everywhere. We feel like we're the guys who are throwing cold water on a perfectly good idea, but it's because when they come to you and they tell you about this idea, it sounds wonderful. We have to be the ones to tell you, try to be sober here and remind you that Pyramid Market is right next to them. Uh Pyramid Market got zapped by this council a couple of years ago. Uh you know, they were selling single cigarettes, they were selling single beer. A young man who got keep right out of jail got shot, killed with a shotgun right in front of that bar gate. So maybe La Rocos isn't going to attract this bad uh element, but certainly Pyramid Market, I'm not sure they've proven to me that they still don't attract that bad element. So um I I'm just warning the business, you don't understand what the neighborhood uh has has attracted in the past, what those businesses there have attracted, and be very, very careful. But I'll be honest with you, I do want entertainment in the east side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Mr. Flores says he also wants a place to be able to go dance with his wife. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? All right, with that then, is there a motion to close the public comment period? Okay, first and second, uh Mr. Bishop, seconded by Ms. Betancourt, call for the question, please.
Mayor Protim Loa?
Yes.
Council members Carrillo?
Yes.
Betancourt?
Yes.
And Bishop?
Yes.
And I I would just ask Ms. Andrews to come up and uh is there anything additional you wish to say and?
Um yes, I wanted to bring attention to, in the staff report, um one of the conditions of the dance and entertainment permit, if it is approved, is that the Palmdale Municipal Code, chapter nine point one eight point zero two zero, the operation of any sound amplifier or similar machine or device shall not be plainly audible at a distance of fifty feet from the building between the hours of ten PM and eight AM. Okay, and that is something that is in, if it is approved, it is in their entertainment permit that is issued to them each year. Also, I wanted to bring up that uh the dance and entertainment permit is renewed annually and if um if there's any issues or problems, it can be revoked.
Okay.
And I I was gonna say that, um you know, while I may have sounded sounded critical, it's it's my obligation as a council person to to ask the hard questions and to give as much information as I can about these projects, so it I I meant no disrespect to the to the the applicants at all, I just have an obligation to to ask the questions, so thank you for their patience.
All right, and then uh does the building or uh structure uh premises uh or the equipment used to conduct the business activity to have entertainment in this building fail to comply with all applicable health, zoning, fire, building and safety laws of the state of California or the city of Palmdale?
Yes.
It does not fail or it does fail?
It does not fail.
Okay. And uh has, to your knowledge, or during any of the investigations that have been conducted in the background of this business, have they knowingly made any false, misleading or fraudulent statement of material fact in the application for the business permit or in any reported statement required to be filed by the director or the city council?
There has been no false accusations that we're aware of.
Any false statements made by them that you're aware of, okay? And is this business prohibited by any local state statute, state law, statute, rule or regulation or is prohibited in the particular location or zone by any law, statute, rule or regulation? Is it prohibited from conducting business there by any law or regulation?
No.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
I don't I don't see a problem with this, this is already a currently an existing business in the city of Palmdale that's had no issue and probably will continue to have no issue, and the fact that they've gone through all this trouble just to just to play music and allow their their customers to dance shows volume about how they're willing to follow the law and respect the ordinances of the city of Palmdale. Um I would imagine some other businesses wouldn't even recognize that, they would just probably start playing music and letting people dance, but the fact that they went out of their way to make sure that they've done everything by the book and and dotted their i's and crossed their t's and and does that uh speaks volume, so I'm I'm willing to approve this and then.
Mr. Bishop, is that a motion to adopt the resolution?
It's a motion to approve and then if my council wants to uh give the option for them.
So there's a motion by Mr. Bishop?
Second.
Second by Ms. Betancourt.
Do you wanna discuss having them or having uh having them have longer hours just on Friday or Saturday to that one o'clock per their request is?
What is the staff position on that?
You know what, I would have to defer to planning and find out with the conditional use permit, uh that would take precedent over anything, so whatever the conditional use permit states is what they would have to follow.
Okay, Mr. Garbey is approaching, he maybe can help us.
Uh good evening, everyone, uh Luis Garbey, uh director of economic and community development, I think um what staff would likely recommend is to approve this as today, uh move forward, I think we're not opposed to extending hours, but maybe we get the, we get the, allow the operation and then maybe in six months we can kind of reevaluate to see just to make sure that they're adhering to the existing conditions.
I I think that um some of the ones that I've seen have started out with limited hours and then uh after a period of observation, uh that can certainly be brought back and extend appropriately, right?
And it gives them, it gives them from a business standpoint, a chance to work through the kinks and things.
It could be that at eleven-thirty at night, there's nobody there that needs to keep going, so um, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, call for the question, in other words, the resolution is being adopted as stated with the stated hours that were mentioned previously.
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Protim Loa?
Yes.
Council members Carrillo?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Betancourt?
Yes.
Very good, that is adopted. We're now at fourteen point one, is there any need to any break? I I think we ought to push on to get this done.
Are you asking that we need to take a break?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do we have to remove the, uh, planning commissioners, all of them? Do we have to remove all the planning commissioners? No, 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 to remove them from the positions. All right, we had, uh, huh? Okay, all right. Uh, I'm going to call, um, Mr. Porter, the city attorney, to address the issues, uh, raised in fourteen point one. We're at number fourteen point one. No public comment recorded on this one?
So, um, so we're we're good, we're live? Okay, perfect.
Do we need public comment on this one?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So, uh, this is item fourteen point one. This is the appointment, uh, relating to the planning commissioners.
Could we have order, please? Could we have order in the chamber? Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Porter.
So, uh, item fourteen point one is appointment of planning commissioners. So you're all aware, there's two separate items, like, so we already adopted the ordinance, so, um, this is how the ordinance works as applied. So all the, um, under the new rules, um, every district, this is, there's two sets of rules. One set is the long-term rules, and one set is the short-term rules. The long-term rules say that each one gets one. Every district needs to have one commissioner from that district. So if you appoint somebody to a particular district, and they live in that district, and that person was appointed by the council member representing that district, then that person will continue to serve in office beyond January. They will continue to serve until the end of their term because they are complying with the permanent code. The only issue is if, for some reason, you do not wish to appoint somebody that lives in that particular district, or, for example, we've got a vacant district, District Five. We don't have anybody that represents District Five. So no matter how it is or who you appoint to that district, um, that person will only serve until after the new city council takes their seat. And somebody from District Five appoints somebody, and then the council decides whether to approve that person or not. Now that's stated, so you do have the option for the next, say, six-month period, if you want to, to appoint somebody that doesn't live in your district. That is permissible. But that person will no longer have the right to serve beyond, we'll call it, January, after the new city council takes over and whatever. So if you, if you want your person to serve on a permanent basis, if that person would need to be nominated by the council member who represents that district, and then approved by the majority of the city council.
But we don't have anyone in that district now, so who can make the motion to appoint for District Five?
So the ordinance expressly says that the city council has the option to decide, so you could nominate, just as, just as you would handle any other motion, is that you could nominate somebody, you all collectively vote on who you wish to appoint. If a majority of you can approve somebody, then you will appoint somebody essentially until you can get somebody, a council member from District Five, to serve, to, to make that appointment.
Okay, so we do have, uh, public comment at this point. Is there anyone online?
Unless there are any questions from the council at this point?
Well, let's, let's, let's take
Okay, that's fine.
Yes, who's, who's on? Mr. Shankman, please.
Thank you, uh, council. This is, uh, quite a mess tonight, and this was quite a mess last week when it was, uh, you know, trying to draft an ordinance on the fly, uh, which it's unclear what actually was adopted. Anyway, it, it really reflects a lack of understanding about how redistricting works, right? Redistricting does not cut short the term of any existing office holder. So that's why the lame duck mayor is, is still the lame duck mayor. That's why.
Mr. Shankman, that is not necessary, sir. I would ask you to refrain from making that kind of comment.
Yeah, this is my time for public comment. Um, thank you. Uh, I didn't use any obscenities or anything like that. Um, that's why the lame duck mayor is still the lame duck mayor. And that's why, uh, you know, state senators in California, um, you know, don't get eliminated from their terms of office when there's redistricting. They have four-year terms, and the same is true for your planning commissioners. So in this particular instance, mid, uh, according to the staff report, Ms. Namath resides in District Five, and Mr. Avery resides in District Two, and they have, uh, still remaining unexpired terms. Their terms do not expire by operation of law, um, simply because of a redistricting. That leaves Districts One, Three, and Four that do not have anyone with an unexpired term. And under the Palmdale Municipal Code, as I understand it, is each, uh, the, the council members from Districts One, Three, and Four, um, Mr. Bishop, Ms. Bettencourt, and Mr. Carrillo, then get to nominate someone, uh, to the planning commission, subject to the, to a majority vote of the council. This whole mess was not necessary, uh, and, and we all know why it happened. It's because, like all, many of the problems of the city of Palmdale, it's because the lame duck mayor co-opted the city attorney, and that's just wrong. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else online?
Yes, we have Eric Olson. Feel free to unmute yourself.
Issue was complicated on purpose for political reasons, and it didn't need to be. You have a chair that had an unexpired term, and she currently lives in District Five. How perfect is that, that it worked out so nicely that there's no council member in Five, but you have someone who's the chair with an unexpired term that already lives there? Keep her for continuity. Keep her there, and then the rest of you get to pick who you want. I think the law requires that you get the ability to just pick whoever you want. It has to be ratified by your peers, that you get to nominate whoever you want. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online or on the phone?
Yes, we have Jason Zink. Feel free to unmute yourself.
Mr. Zink. Mr. Zink, can you hear us?
Yes, do you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Okay. You know how I feel. This should have gone to a vote of the people. The people decide how they want to be governed, not political politicians, council members. The people decide how they want to be governed. Okay? If they want the mayor to be rotated, it's up to them. If they want a mayor elected at large, it's up to them. It's not up to you. This is about as wrong as it can be in a democracy. The people decide, not politicians. You know that. I don't have to, I don't have to tell you that. I'm younger than all of you guys. You know what's right and what's wrong. As far as this attorney from Malibu, comparing Malibu to Palmdale is crazy. Billionaires, billionaires, the working class, lower-class people that
Mr. Six, uh, stick to fourteen point one, please, the appointments of the planning commissioners.
I am.
Go ahead.
I'm tired of this guy interfering with our local elections. This is about Palmdale. You know how much I love this city, how much I love this valley. You guys overstepped. This should have gone to a vote of the people. As far as the commission, let them stay. Why is this chaos? Why is all this time being wasted? When we have so many important things to do? We have seventy thousand people suffering that are paying double price for gasoline to make it to work. And you're spending time on this? It's not right. You guys know I'll do anything for you, anything for your families, anything. Time, money is being wasted on foolishness. Why? Why? I love you guys. What is going on? Makes no sense. Let the planning commission go. Let them stay in their seats until election day. Because you know what? You guys are, are the ultimate decision makers. Doesn't matter what they say. You guys are the last buck. The last decision makers, right? I, I, I'm disappointed, I'm saddened by this council. I love you guys. I don't know what's going on right.
Your time's expired, Mr. Zink. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else, uh, online?
No more at this time.
Anyone in the chamber? Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, Eugene Hernandez, uh, once again, I question the liability of existing planning commission's decision to authorize the building of another hotel that this city doesn't need. As I said before, the city, the, the hotels that exist are virtually empty. Why would the planning commission approve another hotel for the city when it should, it shouldn't be, something shouldn't be built? Something more beneficial for the community should be built. I, I, I wonder how much undue influence do developers and big business have on the planning commission for their decisions? It's really questionable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Anyone else in the chamber wishing to address this point? Is there a motion to close the public comment?
I'll make the motion to close public comment.
Second.
All right, call the question, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Scario?
Yes.
Bishop? And Bettencourt?
Yes.
All right, um, Mr. Porter, we had a, uh, some comments made about this, uh, uh, that they need clarification. In terms of whether these terms expire, don't expire, under the, uh, municipal, under the ordinance that was adopted, and any other applicable laws?
So, um, the, the code indicates that when, uh, a district, under our existing code, and something that we didn't change, it says that if you don't live in the district to which you're appointed from, you're no longer on the commission. So potentially, if that's what that mean, if, if it literally means what it says, then we need to make sure that we have, that we need to reappoint. So that's, that's the purpose for this.
It's black letter law in the ordinance.
So I understand, um, what one of the commenters was saying, that, you know, in general, in other situations, that, um, when you're dealing with assembly districts and council member districts, et cetera, that you stay in office, but that isn't what our code says. So the concern is, we just want to make sure that you comply with the code. You have the right to appoint whoever you want. Um, and this is just simply to make sure that you're complying with our code.
So long as they live in the district.
Yes, so on a permanent basis, the code, of course, if you don't like what the code says, you can amend the code. That is also your choice.
Okay. All right, uh, is there a motion to remove, uh, um, the present sitting planning commissioners? I think we need to do that first, and then we'll go to appointing, uh, planning commissioners. Is there a motion to, uh, remove them?
You could do it one at a time, or you can
Can we not just extend?
All right, I'm gonna do this. I'm going to make a motion to appoint Dean Henderson to District Two. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Very good. Any, is there, any need to discuss it any further? Not hearing that, I call for the question.
Mayor Pro Tim, how far? Sorry. Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Scario?
I'm sorry, just for clarification, that motion is to appoint him to District Two.
Do you use that?
Yes, of course. I just want to clarify that, yes. Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Bettencourt?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, going back to District One, Mr. Bishop, do you have a, a motion?
Uh, yes, um, can I, uh, are we, uh, I'm able to reappoint the existing planning commissioner? And I think our city attorney said, uh, that they can, it can be revisited January of twenty twenty And I think our city attorney said, uh, that they can, it can be revisited January of twenty twenty-three.
For District One?
Yeah. I wanted to keep, uh, the planning commissioner the same in, uh, my district until after the election, when things change around, um, for consistency and continuity on the planning commission. So, uh, for District One.
So, so to be clear, for District One, you're recommending that, what would otherwise be your appointment, that you'd be appointing somebody that is, does not currently serve in District One?
Uh, it was.
He was there, but the line's changed, and she's no longer in that district.
Yeah, the current, yeah. Our, the current appointment still is District One, but not till after.
That, um, that is also, that's acceptable, and that person would only serve until, um, you know, on a temporary basis.
Until January thirty-first?
Well, uh, we'll call it that, but it wouldn't be exactly that date, but it would be whenever the new council takes office, and then they appoint a replacement. So for example, the moment that the new council appoints somebody to serve in District Five, they would need to simultaneously appoint somebody specifically that lives in District One.
Okay, okay, is there a second for Mister Bishop's, uh, request?
Well, uh, before that, uh, you said District Five?
Now, he's making an appointment for, he's, he's, he's making a motion to reappoint Christina Fragasides to stay in District One until after the new council is, uh, seated. Is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second it. Any, any further discussion?
I I just, I'm, I'm a little confused. Does this, so it, it's only two, December thirty-first? Does this start the two-year term?
So, so it's not technically until December. So may, for shorthand, we can call it January. Now, it's not technically that they would be serving till January. Technically, it would be they would serve until the new city ca- council takes office, which is roughly November, December, right? So they're voted in November, take office probably in December. At some point thereafter, the new city council would end up appointing somebody on a permanent basis to serve in District Five and any other district where there wasn't somebody appointed. So maybe that ends up being in January. So for sake of illustration, let's call it January. So if you voted yes, then this person would, would stay essentially until January.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
Council members Corio?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Bettencourt?
Yes.
Very good, um, District Three, Ms. Bettencourt, do you have a motion for appointment?
I, well, if we're just gonna leave all the planning commissioners in place as they are, is, is that what we're doing?
Well, uh, not necessarily. I mean, I think that you have the, uh, right under the ordinance, this is explained by the city attorney, to appoint any person you want who resides in District Three.
Well, Stacia Nameth is the, the chair of the planning commissioner, the planning commission, so I would like to keep her in place.
Well, could, could, you could make a motion, um, to have her appointed in District Five, which is where I understand she lives.
Yeah, I I just wish that they were here to chime in, I don't, I don't, I don't know if that affects them in any way, but. Okay, can I make the motion then, instead of talking about District Three, can we talk about District Five for a minute?
Certainly.
Okay, so since she is our chair, I want to keep her on our planning commission. So if she is in District Five, I would, I would like for her to be appointed to District Five, but here's the problem that I have. She has a year left on her term, right? So if we put her in District Five now, then that means that she expires in December as opposed to the additional year.
Well, she would be, uh, expiring in January, I believe.
Is that right?
Yeah.
So, so the, the expiration of terms is not dependent on when their term started, it's what district they represent. So, um, in any event, whoever.
I just don't want to cut her short. If, you know, if we promised our planning commissioners a two-year term, I think we should make sure that they get a two-year term.
So, right, so you can certainly appoint her to, to Five, and then whoever is the council member that ends up representing council member, uh, District Five, can make the determination at that point whether they want to continue to have her serve in District Five.
So just for clarification, I thought that you mentioned before that in this case, Station Nameth, she, if she gets appointed to District Five, because she already lives in District Five, then she would continue.
She would continue except that. Our ordinance says that they must have been appointed by, they must have been nominated by the person who represents Five, and we don't have anybody that represents Five. So there is no way for Five to have a permanent appointment, for lack of a better word.
So whoever comes seen, elected as council member for, or council.
Could, could bump her out, then.
Could either vote to, to keep her or, um, not renominate her or, or nominate someone else.
Okay, so I, I would like to nominate her for District Five.
Very good, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
Council member Corio?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Bettencourt?
Yes.
All right, now you still have the opportunity to nominate someone for your district.
And that has to be out of the applications that we've received, right?
I believe there's been applications for District Three, there's been several.
Um, I would like to go ahead and nominate Marcus Alvarez.
Marcus Alvarez?
I'll second that nomination.
Okay. Any further comment? Call for the question.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
Council members Corio?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Bettencourt?
Yes.
Very good, um, so District Four, Mr. Corio?
I really want to respect the process as you did. Uh, there were applications that were submitted, and people really took the time, uh, those that were interested in submitting their applications. So I'm glad to, you, uh, see you setting the example, because the people that put in the applications took the time, and they really show interest in doing that. Uh, there were three applications submitted for District Four, uh, and I am nominating, uh, Mister Jetro Elise.
What's his name, I'm saying?
Jetro Elise.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
Council members Corio?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Bettencourt?
Yes.
Very good, uh, so that is done. Fourteen point two, approval appointment to the Palmdale Aerospace Academy. And, uh, I believe we have six applicants for one position? Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there a motion to appoint any one of the six candidates?
Before we make a motion, I, uh, was, it was brought to my attention that the TPAA uh, changed their meeting, uh, times. I believe they were meeting once a month. But now I believe that they meet twice a month. I just wanted to make that clarification, and if staff can, uh, confirm that. Cause I believe the staff report says that they meet only once a month, but that changed. Um, I just wanted to clarify that. Um, if you ask me for a motion, yeah, I'd like to nominate, uh, Ms. Sophia Avalos.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mrs. Bettencourt, okay. Any further discussion? Any other nominations? All right, let's call for the question.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
Council members Corio?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Bettencourt?
Yes.
Very good, she's approved. Uh, congratulations, Mister Alvarez. Thank you for being here. I don't know if any of the other, uh, appointees are here. Oh, yes, Miss Fragasides, congratulations to you as well.
And Mister Jetro's here too, congratulations, Jetro.
Oh, very good, there you go, welcome. Congratulations, all right. Okay, uh, fifteen point one is a, uh, new business, approved the joint powers agreement.
Before we start, based on the advice given by the city attorney, I'm gonna recuse myself, uh, out of this one for having done business with the city of Lancaster.
Very good, Mister Bishop recuses himself. Uh, yes, sir?
Mayor Pro Tim, uh, members of the city council, uh, item fifteen point one, this is a, an item to approve a joint powers agreement creating a high desert quarter corridor, joint powers agency, not, not the, uh, um, so this is a, would be a, an agreement, joint powers agreement between the County of Los Angeles, the uh, County Metropolitan Transit Authority, the City of Adelanto, and Lancaster, Palmdale, and City of Victorville. The High Desert Corridor Joint Powers Authority was originally formed in two thousand and six with two members, the County of San Bernardino and the County of Los Angeles, who appointed board members from the cities of Adelanto, Lancaster, Palmdale, Victorville, and the town of Apple Valley. The authority was a, a project-specific JPA formed to develop a transportation options between the Antelope Valley and Victor Valley. Namely, the new expressway was linking the SR fourteen and fifteen, the I fifteen. Purpose of the High Desert Corridor was to improve east-west mobility within the high desert region of Southern California by addressing future and present travel demands and mobility needs. On March first, twenty twenty-two, the County of San Bernardino voted to withdraw its membership from the current High Desert Corridor JPA. Effective June thirtieth of this year. The existing High Desert Corridor was dissolved July first, twenty twenty-two, but will remain open to wind down the affairs of that agency. This agreement that you're hearing tonight is for a new joint powers authority. Eliminates the San Bernardino County as a member and includes Palmdale as a, and along with men, with the, excuse me, along with the County of Los Angeles, LA Metro, City of Lancaster, and the City of Adelanto. The town of Apple Valley has declined to be a member of the JPA at this time. Thus far, Los Angeles County, the cities of Adelanto, Lancaster, Victorville have approved their JPA memberships. LA Metro is scheduled to approve the agreement on the twenty-fifth of August. Staff recommends the city council approve the High Desert Corridor Joint Powers Agreement, authorizing the formation of a joint powers of, agency between county and, uh, MTA and the cities.
Very good.
Staff is available for any questions, and Arthur Sohikian, executive director of NCTC is on the phone as well.
Very good, um, before we ask any questions, is there a motion to approve the joint powers agreement creating a High Desert Corridor Joint Powers Agency?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good, call for the vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
Council members Corio?
Yes.
Bishop?
Uh, he's recused himself.
Bettencourt?
Yes.
Very good, um, are there any questions by council members?
No questions, just a, a, a statement. I, I believe that this is really a, uh, positive, uh, way to move forward in getting a reliable public train system, uh, transportation. Um, as members of NCTC at one point, some of us know that that's been something that, it's been in the discussion for, for years. Uh, now that the High Desert Corridor itself, the freeway, uh, slated to be built in twenty sixty-two, which made that happen.
We should hope so, man.
Right, but the, the, um, the way that this could be really beneficial is by bringing Brightline, uh, that is building from Apple Valley to Vegas, trans, public transportation system privately, uh, operated. And we've been working with Brightline for quite some time now, trying to convince them to come to Palmdale, so that Palmdale can be the connecting point going down to Union Station, uh, and eventually bring high-speed rail. Um, but this, I think, it will be, uh, a game changer for the Antelope Valley High Desert, connecting Victor Valley with the Antelope Valley, uh, and then, you know, going to Vegas for those that want to do that. That will really relieve a lot of, uh, traffic on the fifteen, and I fully believe that this will be used because people from LA, if I live there, I would rather come up to Palmdale on metrolink, get on Brightline, and go to Vegas, rather than driving all the way on the ten freeway or the sixty to the fifteen and essentially being their gridlock. Uh, so I think that this, this is a really positive, uh, JPA. Thank you for.
Thank you, Miss Corio.
Appreciate it.
Mrs. Bettencourt? Any comments?
No.
Okay, and I believe that we, the city of Palmdale has done extensive work in, in advancing, um, the right-of-way and, and doing other environmental studies and so on to, uh, in an attempt to get that line from Apple Valley to Palmdale.
Absolutely, this, the, the city has been working with the other agencies, uh, on this probably for over ten years. And it's done, it's put a lot of effort, staff time, and effort, um, some money, but, uh, the right-of-way, I, it's my understanding that there is money slated through Measure R for right-of-way that's still there. Uh, there's been some efforts to move that money, but I'll let, uh, if you have specific questions about that, Arthur's on the phone and, and.
I just have a comment, and that is essentially, uh, you know, it's good to see the members that are participating, particularly Los Angeles County. I think we have a great advocate in Ms. Barker, um, and I think we're gonna need her influence, um, and, and, and political power, uh, to try to get this done for Palmdale. Um, because we're in competition with Cucamonga, where they're also competing for this, uh, line to be extended down to them. So I know it's a difficult issue, but, um, I think with the right, um, moves on our part and, and, and having staff, um, complete the work and expediting the work that's being done, uh, we may be able to see this happen for us. Are, are there any other questions? Call for the vote, please.
So, so we had a, a vote on, um, number one already, which was to approve the agreement, and I s- do see in the staff recommendation that there were two items, that there was appointing council member and a second council member to serve on the JPA.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I, uh, appoint myself?
You can nominate yourself.
I nominate Juan.
There you go.
All right, so.
I'll second that.
And could I be the alternate?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not, yeah, I'll nominate you.
You okay with that? All right. So the motion is to approve the joint powers agreement. It is to appoint council member Corio as a member of the Board of Directors, and to appoint Richard Loa as an alternate delegate to the Board of Directors. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, call for the question.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
Council members Corio?
Yes.
And Bettencourt?
Yes.
Okay, I don't see how we could keep you off, right, Mister Corio? All right, we are now at, uh, fifteen point two, and that has been, um, put over. And, uh, I believe some issues were, um, addressed earlier on this item. I'd just like for you to explain why the recusal rules that we're following are the appropriate rules.
Okay, so, um, there was a public comment made earlier indicating, why don't you act on this now? It's because there are legal rules and we need to comply with the legal rules. Um, the short version is yes. Uh, one of the commenters was correct in pointing out that there's a code provision, and he cited the first two sections of the applicable rule. However, he failed to read the rest of the rule, and if you read the rest of the rule, it talks about how you cannot, once, if, if the two, first two people have participated, they can't, you can't, you cannot segment it in such a way that would allow the conflicted people to then essentially participate and then essentially have influence on the decision that was already made. So in other words, you need them to vote first. That's the, that's the sole holdup. Once we have the three vote first, then we're done. Additionally, there was discussion about the public, generally the exception that doesn't apply, that applies to general plans and budgets. This is not the budget, this is allocation of money in the budget. Also, this is not a general plan. So in short, there's a reason that we're doing this, and, um, I'm happy if anybody has questions about this procedure and why we're doing it, but believe me, I've looked at this and I'm correct.
So, may I ask a question, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, you may, but the matter's been put over to August seventeenth, cause that was, uh, announced earlier.
Yeah, that's put out, but I just wanted to ask a question on clarification on.
Sure, sure, of course.
Mister Porter said, as you are very well aware, my name's come up, uh, for the last five months since this has been going on. There's been, um, the perception that there is a conflict of interest with me participating uh, in one of the grant applications. I consulted that with you, uh, the last two meetings that we had. Uh, I don't believe that there is a conflict of interest whatsoever, but that's something that should be clarified by our legal.
That is entirely correct. Uh, there is no legal conflict of interest. People may argue about whether you should or whether you should not, but that is not a legal question, that's a policy question. And you all are here to do what's in the public interest, and you need to make the determination to do what you believe is right. There's no legal rule against you participating.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, this matter is put over to August seventeenth. Um, okay, we've reached the point of public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any persons wishing to address? First, is there anyone online on non-agenda items?
Yes, we have Jason Zinc. Feel free to unmute yourself.
Hi, hi.
Hi, Mister Zinc, go ahead, see.
Love you guys. Nothing's wrong right now. What's wrong?
Nothing wrong, sir. We're just wanting to end the meeting.
No. We have elections, right? There has not been one broadcast that there is elections on the city website, on social media, on emails, in the newspaper, on AV Times, nothing. That elections is open. Do you not feel that's? Do you not feel that's disturbing as an American? Question to all five of you. As the attorney, I'm gonna tell you right now, you're just in an opinion. You're not fact. Okay? Trust me, I know all about attorney. I've been dealing with him my whole life. This is about America. Elections are about ideas. They're not about. I, I just, I'm just so sad. I'm so sad for our city. I'm so sad for our community. The thing about elections is about ideas. I might not win against you, I might win against you. But it's about ideas. What's wrong with our city? What ideas do you have to make our city better? And you're not promoting that as an American? That's communism. That's Nazism. That's everything that's wrong with what's going on with the left. Not, not liberals, the far-left, what is going on with our country. And you guys are conservatives, and you support this, and you don't put nothing in the paper, on the city website, on social media, that elections are open? And then you don't have election reform where candidate statements are free? I don't understand it. I know. I fucking know I'm fucking right, and you know I'm fucking right.
All right, Mr. Zink.
Change your fucking way, Loa, goddammit!
That was not necessary, uh, but have, have we not made an announcement in the, in the press and online? And on our website? That nomination papers are open?
We do have an elections page.
Okay, and what about, has, has an announcement been made?
The candidate list is being sent out to those, to directors and to others who are requesting it. It's been sent to the AV Press. They are on the list.
Have they published, uh, an article? I mean, I, I thought I saw something about different people pulling nomination papers for various positions around the valley, but I did not see that, in fact, we already had three nomination papers pulled by three different persons, but that was not stated in the AV Press. About, about the city of Palmdale. I saw, I saw various other places, but, um, in any event, that's, you know, I, I mean, I, I don't like the way Mr. Zink presented that, following, you know, what happened at the end there, but he makes a point, um, that this needs to be publicized. We need to get the word far and wide that nomination papers are open, and there is a very limited time in which to, uh, pull and get the signatures and do everything necessary to get the candidacy. So can we please do what, uh, is necessary to get the word out?
Mr. Loa?
Yes.
Um, Javier has some information on this topic, if you want to have him come up.
Of course.
And while he makes his way up here, remember that we approve a resolution or an ordinance of, of announcing the.
Yes, that's what I thought, yes.
So it's been done.
It's been done, yeah, but, I mean, maybe the publicity hasn't happened. Mr. Flores, go ahead, please.
Um, front page, AV Press, front page, uh, article that said, uh, nomination, uh, type period is open, starting the nineteenth. And I, as a consequence of that article, 'cause I cut out articles, uh, very relevant, perm-dino, uh, articles, I was able to, uh, pull out that article and inform, uh, one of the candidates.
Right, and, and, and I think that's great. However, uh, unfortunately, the circulation of newspapers has declined incredibly, and there's, um, you know, i- it just isn't what it used to be just a few years ago. So we need to get the word out in all social media and every avenue possible. But thank you for that, Mr. Flores. All right, um, so public comments on non-agenda items, anyone else on the phone, please?
We have Sky Jung. Feel free to unmute yourself.
Hi, I just wanted to address the, um, concern about the paper, um, the election's not being listed in the paper. They were on the front page, and then they were also under public notices listed. I just wanted to let you know that, um, just in case there's any other problems.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sky.
We need to step it up in any event.
We, we also had the call for the election at the last, uh, at the council meetings in June, and those were all published as well, so.
That's right, okay.
Just to clarify.
But we just need to keep it going. Now, we need to encourage any and all residents that wish to.
It is also our website, sir.
Okay, just, just keep that going, though. All right, any other, anyone else wishing to address non-agenda items?
We have Eugene Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez, thank you so much for waiting.
Eugene Hernandez, uh, Antelope Valley Green Party. I wanna thank the council. More alcohol, more guns in Palmdale, way to go. Nothing beneficial like a bookstore for the community, but, you know, that's your choice. And, and I thought, I find it very reprehensible, Mr. Loa, for you to suppress this threat by the mayor against Ruth Sanchez. I, I want the, the, um, the attorney to make official a complaint and the city manager that our First Amendment rights to speak before the council are not gonna be suppressed by a, a member of this board, particularly Stephen Hoffmann. I think that very reprehensible, and I think that you gotta have common sense, that you, you should meet twice a month. You're, you're doing it automatically because of, you don't get through the agenda, but why should we have to wait to eleven o'clock at night for you to come to the, to, to the conclusion you're gonna, you're gonna adjourn? That's not right for the citizens, you know, and, and that's been happening time and time again. You should have dealt with the AV funds long time ago, five months ago, but you keep putting out. And I think that Mr. Porter should be relieved and replaced by Kevin, um, Shanklin, 'cause I think you're not following Brown Act rules. That there should have been a vote on the, the organizations that are providing so much-needed services to the community, preventing people from getting killed in the desert from the heat by feeding thousands of people. Why are you withholding the funds from these organizations? Even CERT, CERT, which is an organization to help people live, you, you were denying them funds because of your fuzzy logic. You know, it's a disgrace for you as elected officials not to give a decision on this with, with a murky thing that, that you and, uh, and Bishop belong to some organization, that you don't wanna disclose, and you don't wanna take a, 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 a position in it. It's a disgrace to us as citizens to have to come month after month to this city council to speak on that agenda, and all of a sudden, uh, Stephen pulls a, um, uh, um, missing persons. He, he, he disappears. You know, how much more do we have to take for you not to have the guts to make a decision? You know, you should meet automatically twice a month so you don't have such an outrageous long agenda. It only makes sense. And it, it's a, it's a really, it's a really slap in the face for us, who are citizens, who are voters, for coming in every single month when you keep postponing that agenda item. It, it's really, should be addressed. And if the, the, if the, if the city attorney doesn't wanna impose Brown Act rules, someone else should.
Okay, thank you. I, I just wanna, I just wanna comment that, uh, Ms. Sanchez was able to make all of her remarks. All I commented was that it is possible to be in the hospital and text. And, um, so there was no repression or suppression of her comments. Let's see, I think that's the end of the agenda. Anyone else wishing to, uh, make on non-agenda items, please come forward? No, that's all right, just state your name, ma'am. We've seen you.
Evening, thank you. This has been very interesting. My first in-person meeting, and I'm entertained and thrilled at everything I saw. I'm Laurel Forrest, and, uh, somewhat of a techie too. Um, I have tried to watch these, uh, meetings at home, and I find it difficult. I know this, the camera work is, is limited, because when you're watching the screen on a little laptop, or god forbid on your phone, excuse me, don't mean to say that, gosh forbid, um, it's really hard to see. Um, so we're also used to attending business meetings during COVID, um, in Zoom format, where you can see each person's face as they're speaking. So I was wondering, given the, uh, limited number of two cameras here, if you could consider upgrading your camera work to include a small camera in front of each of the council members, and then, just like on a Zoom meeting, the, um, speaker or the organizer switch the camera to that person, so people at home, and for the public record too, and people who wanna watch it later, but people at home can see, well, who's speaking? 'Cause I've found that from home, I'm, I hear a voice, I don't know which one of you is speaking, and of course, it's, it would be cumbersome for each one of you to say, okay, now I'm Richard Loa and I'm gonna say this, or, or I'm Laura Bettencourt and I'm gonna talk. Um, would be very nice, just put a little camera in front of you, just like a Zoom meeting, let everybody see and understand, well, whose input really is this that we're hearing? So let's do a little more twenty twenty-two techie-techie, okay? Thank you.
You know, and as a matter of fact, Ms. Bettencourt, you had suggested that some time ago.
I did, I did. I, I had suggested exactly what you said a couple of months ago, because I was watching from home when I was sick, and I recognize their voices, but you could not tell who anybody was.
The public can't tell.
I totally agree with you.
I think it's part of the public record for the public to know which or council members has which viewpoint and which position they're taking.
Sure.
Thank you.
That makes a lot of sense. I hope we can get to the day when we no longer have Zoom meetings, frankly, but it's very useful at the time, because a lot of people are falling sick. Anyone else wishing to speak on non-agendized matters? All right, in that event, then we're going to adjourn the meeting to August the third, twenty twenty-two. Thank you.